...a couple times I heard, and the first time I heard it, I would have to shut it off if things were... With that, I will take away the reading of the public hearing notice, save a little bit of time, and jump right into the hearings. I'll do them in the order that they are in the agenda. And first up is transfer development rights of TDI. There is an explanation, or a brief explanation of the TDI on the front table also, if you didn't get that. What it is basically is a process where development rights on one piece of property can be transferred to another. What we've proposed is properties in the R sixty and the R one thirty zoning areas be allowed to transfer their inherent rights of development to a smaller, more condensed piece of property. What that means is a component or a developer would come in with the sending parcel and they would lay out a complete subdivision plan, eliminate the wetlands, the roadways, any non-billable areas, and come up with a number for the amount of developable lots they have, a number of housing units they could place on that property. And then they would, once that was agreed upon with the planning board, those rights would be transferred to a smaller piece of property in the different areas you see listed in the bylaw, the village areas, Cranberry Highway. And they would come in with a new plan, which would also be scrutinized by the planning board. And at the same, once that was agreed upon, the conservation restriction would be placed on the sending parcel, or it would be conveyed to a nonprofit. So that land would stay forever untouched, and the newer, more dense development would be hopefully constructed. Do you hear any points on that? Is that TDI or the nutshell? So with that, I would ask if anyone has any comments on the, on that particular bylaw that they could come forward and share them with us? Yes, sir? I would ask anybody coming forward to speak, they'd come up, sign into the sheet, and please use the microphone.
I did sign in. So my name's Dave Bird. I have a question about this. So if you're in a particular residential area, for example, and you purchase area, the area the houses were built out, and so you understand a certain density of houses will be around you. Now, the adjacent property, in this case, can go through a TDI and significantly increase the density of the houses around you at that point, is that correct?
Yeah. Basic, very basic, yes, that is correct.
So by living in a neighborhood with the understanding that it's half acre lots, all of a sudden I can find it's quarter acre lots all around me?
I can't think of a place where it would be half acre, but yes, that is possible.
Or one acre, or ten acre, or whatever it may be, half a quarter acre. And how, how does the planning board address that?
Well, now if you...
Do you take my, make use of the consideration of the fact that I just bought it a year before, expecting similar sized lots in the neighborhood, all of a sudden to find they ain't?
Well, that whole process will be subject to a public hearing, and you can voice your objections at that particular time, and the planning board would, would take your concerns as consideration.
Is it just a public hearing?
Yes, yes, that's what we're doing, we're...
So I'm asking, what sort of, what sort of provisions have you considered for that?
Other than, public hearing process could, could change the plan if we, you know, if we agreed that it was impacting your particular circumstances, the planning board could adjust the plan before it's built, before it's approved.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hope that was helpful. Feel free to write in, guys. Just taking back to that last question, the areas that are being suggested right now as receiving areas are Tyhonen Village, Parker Mills, and East Wareham Village area, or in the Commercial General Zoning District, which is along Cranberry Highway, the Commercial Strip Zoning District, which is mostly along Cranberry Highway, Wareham Village one and two, and Onset Village one and two. Those are the areas we're suggesting that could be receiving areas of this more dense development. The villages Onset and Wareham Village one and two, their density right now is right around eight units per acre. Obviously, in those particular instances, it would be a redevelopment type project. Well, most of them would actually...
Good evening, getting to set up flight to McKinley Street. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I have just a few questions about, written out the stuff, so I'm not going to go through all of this, we had discussions at previous meetings. But on the first page, five seventy, transfer development rights, it says the maintenance of low-density land uses for the sending parcel. First page, first paragraph. Do you envision low-density land uses for the sending parcel?
No, we've actually suggested that there be no development on the...
Exactly right, just suggested that probably should come out.
Yeah, probably got missed when the other added, was added.
The other term right after that, open spaces, which you use constantly throughout this document, it's protecting an open space. The definition of open spaces, the state definition is includes agricultural land. So if you're going to try to leave these in the natural state as we discussed, that would eliminate, would not eliminate use of the areas of granitewalls, and they will be allowed to continue because they are in fact open space. Okay, and I have the documentation to give you on definitions. I suggested anywhere this open space uses natural conditions, which comes right out of the conservation restriction language and the general laws. Instead of open space, everywhere it shows up, open space, they use natural conditions on them. That eliminates the conclusion about open space including agricultural land. I just got a couple of others. You mentioned Tahonen Village, Parker Mills, Togi Road, and East Wareham is partly receiving, and it says they're identified as receiving areas due to the adjacent uses and property What's the property history, adjacent uses that allows those areas to become receiving areas? I thought the criteria was infrastructure.
Infrastructure is, is more, better outlined in the type two area.
I totally agree with this.
In type one...
These areas don't have sewer, they may not have kind of a town of water and everything. And as previously discussed, there's no map on the document that you submitted, so can't tell where these areas are.
I'm afraid the map, that map is a little small.
Okay, I just, just bringing something. The other thing here is that on page five, right at the top, on the procedural requirements, invitation, you have number one, own and fee simple both the proposed sending parcels and the proposed receiving parcels. So in order for you to apply, you have to own both the sending and the receiving. I only know of one developer that owned both the sending and the receiving.
The, I think that must be another typo, because I think it was, receiving, you had
That would eliminate, selling these rights would eliminate everything to do with the TDI. And you'd be the only person that could do that, would be somebody who owned both the sending and the receiving.
I believe that was correct, you say controlled part.
I believe in control, it's still the, you've got to own it, right? So you're eliminating ninety-nine percent of what's going on, and I've got some others. The only other thing that really stuck out to me was under criteria, page seven. Special permit permitting the transfer of development rights in combination with those rights with the development rights pursuant to underlying zoning, being granted by the planning board, and that's a lot of words there, but upon its writ determination that the benefits of the proposed transfer of development rights and the combination of those rights with development rights pursuant to underlying zoning, and here's a punchline, outweighs the detrimental impacts the proposed development would have on the budding lands, neighborhoods, or the town of Wareham. Any feel for the decision? Any way you can get around that, question it, take it further? I mean, what you just wrote there, what it says is that the planning board is the final resolution for anything that occurs with TDI's for the abuddists, the neighborhood, or the entire town.
The planning board is the special permitting department?
I understand that, but what you just said from the previous gentleman about the rights you may or may not have, gerbera butter, or the neighborhood, or you live in a town of Wareham. Is there an appeal? Can you appeal this? Can you go to court on this? Can you appeal for this zoning board to appeal? I mean, I, it just seems to me that there's an awful lot of, nobody way at all, as far as you say, it says you have a transfer development right, and it eliminates everybody else's rights in the town.
Well, again, you still have the public hearing process, and if, if there was an issue of the magnitude you're suggesting, I would think that the planning board would scale back the project or vote it down completely.
Okay. I've made some other, but I'm not going to take all the time here. I've written them out. I'll give you a copy of these if you don't mind, and I'll give you some proof of the definitions on open space, so you can see that, so you can clarify. All right? Thank you.
Page six, George. Fifty-four, five-seven, zero point six, back to the old, just two little bullets on the old fee and simple.
Yeah.
Your explanation applicants are not required, own both sending and passing areas or receiving areas for TDI special permits. I think there's some clarification, there might be something else there, but it was put in, not missing.
What was that, decimal point?
Fifty-four, second paragraph, before five-seven oh point six, says applicants.
That's on a different page, you would think.
Yeah, we're on page five. But just conglot, look at five-seventy point six, and you go with two paragraphs up here. This is the one that was supposed to be...
It's not in the hand of the judge given, I'll take it right out of there.
It's not, of course.
It says, this current says, own and fee simple either the proposed sending parcel or the proposed receiving parcel, and be in possession of a valid purchase and sale option agreement on the parcels not held in fee simple.
That's a different, that's a different...
That's a different, different version. This is the last one. This is... Corrections made on this one.
Okay, I haven't seen, that's not the one that was cast out here tonight. In conclusion, I just like strongly urge the planning board to withdraw this from this time of year. There's, there's an awful lot of questions involved, commercial activities, how that's transferred, how this is going on, and I just, we've been working at this for a long, long time, and I know you guys have been working on it for a long, long time. Let's get it right. And wait six months to get it right, I don't think it's, it's something that's unfallible. I think we've got a great foundation to start working on, but there's an awful lot of issues that I gave you that are outstanding, that I think have to be addressed. And, and I gave you the suggestions, I did, for changes, but that's not my neat making of everything. Thanks. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. There are some omissions here that reference national law that are missing out of the copy that you have in front of you. Yeah, a couple sections are missing, references to general law, and you remember?
I believe the one we gathered is the one that was done prior to October of last... See, this is the, this is the one we're reviewing.
Well, confusing at this point.
Update of the session.
Check this copy, see if it matches.
Who's...
That's mine.
Oh. That's your copy.
Good evening. Um, I've taken a, okay, can I look through this, and I'd just like to echo some of the sentiments of a previous speaker, but then bring some other things up to the board, as I think are critical to the way that this particular bylaw would function. To be quite honest about it, I think you're, you're looking at some serious issues with respect to how you as a planning board are going to administer this in its present form. Not saying that it can't be done, but in its present form, I think you've got some problems here. If we go to the, the section five-seventy, when it talks about maintaining open space, historical features, critical environmental areas, and if you link that to the sending areas, the sending areas are either the R one thirty district or the R sixty district. Now, zoning in the R one thirty is three acres for a house lot. If I have a ten acre parcel, the natural number of house lots I can get out of that ten acres is three. So that means that there's a substantial amount of open space. It might be allotted to a portion of that single family house lot, but nevertheless, it's a substantial amount of area that's allotted to each one of those three house lots in ten acres. Similarly, in the R sixty zone, it doubles to maybe six lots in ten acres, but still, that's a significant amount of open space which you already have. Now, the, the way I understand this transfer of development rights is, is a give and take. The town gets something in exchange for an increase in density in some of the location. Typically, that other location is associated with the same zoning area. For example, if I had ten acres of land in the R one thirty district that I felt I wanted to transfer the development rights from, I would, in most cases, have another parcel of land in the R one thirty district, or I would simply transfer that increase in density too. I wouldn't go to another zoning district where the criteria for the underlying zoning is so much different than what it is in the R one thirty, and similarly, the R sixty. So that's the first concern I have, is that you're, you're transferring things out of a rural residential district that was set up originally, especially the R one thirty, as an agricultural watershed district. That's the way it was set up back in the seventies or whenever it was proposed. The town, in my opinion, is not gaining a substantial amount of protection or open space that it doesn't already have through the R one thirty zoning district. So what are you benefiting? What is the town benefiting by transferring the rights of, say, three house lots out of that zone to someplace that it's already very densely inhabited? That's a concern that I have. The second thing that I have a concern about is under your definition where it talks about development rights, it talks about the determination of the maximum number of development rights available made by the planning board. If I'm a developer, or I'm someone, if I was not retired and, and was still working in the business world, it was up to me to advise a client to come in and to give him some advice on this, I would say, you're opening yourself up to a can of worms, because there is no way that you can measure what you will gain out of this, if the whole thing is left up to the planning board's decision. Planning board members come and go. What one board might say was reasonable for development right transfer, another board might disagree completely. There's nothing in the way of substance which anyone who's looking at this bylaw could pick out and say, okay, now this is what I can do, this is what I'll get, this is what the town will get in return. I think that's a significant issue.
You don't think filing a preliminary plan for your land would, would resolve that, like, much like you do with a parcel development?
No, because in the R one thirty district, I get three lots, I already know that. Even if I take the calculation of the, of the net underlying maximum area, eighty percent of a minimum lot in order for it to qualify, even in the R one thirty district, means two point four acres of billable land. That's what you have to have in order to make a billable lot in the R one thirty district. I already know that. I don't have to do any fancy calculation to figure that out, but what value is that to the town to simply give up three lots in the R one thirty district? What value is that? You already got it, because the underlying zoning is already there. That's the main issue that I have with that. If I go to the receiving parcels, this is the other aspect of the receiving parcels that I have a problem with, receiving area type number one, George, you had mentioned Tahonen Village, Parker Mills, Togi Road, East Wareham. Those have no specific definition attached to them. Even if you show them on the zoning map, unless you define them accurately as to what they are, where the limits are, they would have no meaning to anyone. How would I go into East Wareham and say that the lower end of Great Neck is not in East Wareham? Where, where's the boundary of East Wareham? Where's the boundary of Tahonen or Parker Mills? Those are just locales, they have no definition in terms of the zoning bylaw. So I think that is critical, but you need to define where those are. It's either got to be by states, or it's got to be by means and bounds somehow, so you can define it, know what areas you're talking about. The Commercial General Strip, Commercial Wareham Village one and two, and Onset Village one and two, those areas are, are defined, there's no question about that. But again, I don't know how you transfer the development rights out of a very low-density area into an area, especially a commercial development, where in some of those zones, residential uses aren't even allowed. You can't, I, as our member, the Commercial General District, you don't allow residential uses, Commercial Strip is still allowed. But I don't know how you transfer those rights and equate those rights. It just escapes me, I don't know how you do it. Again, the net usable land area, I won't reiterate that anymore. Five, section five-seventy point three, applicability, it talks about the land area identified as sending areas and land identified as receiving areas on the zoning map. Again, those receiving areas are not identified at all. If you go to five-seventy four, it talks about the planning board, based on the newer calculation, a map, and map shall include supporting information as deemed necessary by the planning board to allow for an accurate calculation of development rights subject to transfer. Again, I don't think that it should be a subjective thing for the planning board to look at, it needs to be objective, and there needs to be criteria set forth by which you would make that judgment, as well as giving the applicant and whoever may come in and try to implement this bylaw, some means of criteria as to how they figure they're going to get something out of it. I don't think it should be left to chance or left to the, I won't call it the whim, that's not a good word to use really, but it should not be left up simply to the decision of the planning board to make that decision, because the planning board members may change from time to time. And what might, what the impact of one board might be, might be completely different from another board. I think it needs to be spelled out, so that no matter who is sitting here, you can apply those criteria. It says in section B under five-seventy point four, the special permit authorized in the transfer shall be referenced to Wareham assessor's map and lot numbers of both sending and receiving parcels. That's very dangerous, for the simple reason that assessors' maps are not legal documents in terms of zoning, and they can change dramatically from year to year. So what might be a sending parcel or a receiving parcel today, might not be a sending or receiving parcel next year, depending on whether or not those maps get revised because of lot changes. So there needs to be something more hard and fast, since assessors' maps and lot numbers based on assessors' maps that occur today, because they're, they're not going to stay the same. There are some areas that they generally the same, but the minute you have a property transfer, those assessors' maps will be different. So I think that's a critical issue for you. I won't, I won't speak anymore about it, there are a couple of other things that I could turn, speak about, but I'm in agreement with the previous speaker that says he feels that they should be put off a little while, so that you can work some of these things out. I'm inclined to agree with that, not that I think this is a bad idea. I've seen the transfer of development rights work very well. As some of you may know, I've been a consultant to the town of Ashby since nineteen eighty, where they have what they call an open space incentive district. It's well-defined in terms of the area of the town, and within that open space incentive district, the transfer of development rights occur. And I can think of a number of cases down there where land that was within a potentially developed area was set aside, where the lot density was such that they pulled what could have been built in a, in a significant portion of that parcel to the front portion of the parcel to increase the density. In exchange for that, they gave up all development rights for the areas along, I think one was the Quasnet River, the other one might have been the Mashpee River. So they were able to transfer the development rights out of a single parcel of land that the developer owned. the developer owned to another portion of that development, increase the density there, and then give up all rights into that parcel which made a nice natural corridor connecting parcels that go all along the river there. So, it is possible to do and I think it's a good idea to do preserving open space and natural resources and so forth. I don't think there's anybody that would question that. But I'm questioning the methodology you're trying to accomplish here because in any of the receiving parcels, you could, by changing the zoning bylaw, increase the density or increase the potential for, say, having a living space or a living space over commercial development. Those kinds of things you'd accomplish in those districts without having to transfer anything out of the R one thirty or the R sixty. With that, I will go sit down.
If you, well, on the same piece of property, you don't think our cluster bylaw addresses that situation when you're transferring within the same piece of property?
No, all that does is transfer the same number of lots from this section of the parcel over to this section of the parcel by reducing the lot area, but you don't get any more lots out of it.
Well, that, exactly.
But that's not what you're proposing to do here because...
Well, on the, when you talk about the same parcel area, you don't think that cluster development...
No, it doesn't do it because you're not, you're not increasing the lot, the number of lots that are allowed under the zoning bylaw because under a cluster, you have to take that entire parcel, create a standard subdivision out of it with a minimum frontage, the minimum lot area. You calculate the number of lots you can get under the zoning bylaw and simply take that number of lots and you pull it in tight to lots that have lesser area and lesser frontage, but you don't get any more lots out of them. A transfer of development rights does more than that. It has a potential because if you look at some of the ways they're calculated, they're giving more of a value to the open space that would be preserved than simply, in a simple exchange for the lot being here versus the lot being there. The natural resources aspect of it, under the bylaws of that scheme, give you a lot greater density away from the natural area that you're trying to protect. And that's, that's what you're getting in exchange. The developer is getting a higher density than he normally would in exchange for giving up the value of those resources or the other potential that might be of significant value to the town. And that's, that's why I'm saying that I don't believe that this bylaw does it because of the R one thirty and the fact that your area for a single lot is so big. I just don't think that it does anything for the town. It's got to be an exchange kind of thing and I don't see the value of the exchange in it.
Thank you.
May I?
Certainly.
I'm Jack Nolan and I'm trying to be as quickly as I can. I came in here to see if this thing would benefit me. I obviously have not done a hundred like the previous speakers have, so let me get right down to it. I own two building lots on Blackmore Pond Road. I own the old railway that shows up in that map I just looked at. Stretch of that goes right through two parcels owned by Wareham Land Trust. And I, my two house lots have been through conservation, I've got to improve order conditions and I think I've been misled slightly by what I've read in the newspapers that somehow I could sell some rights and one of the newspaper articles said I could sell it to the, to the conservation, in this case, Wareham Land Trust, or somehow that this bylaw was going to, I'd be able to, I'm asking now for the price and value of these things as building lots and maybe if there's some impact from all of this, I can sell it cheaper to Wareham Land Trust. At the same time, I own two parcels in Rose Point and they are, these are on a formé and they are parcels subject to the road getting improved. So, another way this could happen is I don't fully understand it, but it's more of a question, question than a statement, would be ideal for me if I could not build on Blackmore Pond Road because Wareham Land Trust would love to have that if I could sell them at less than a price as building lots and I could somehow make a deal, as we used to say, and be able to build on those two parcels in Rose Point. Now, is any of this bylaw, proposed bylaw, applicable to me in my situation?
Well, we certainly wouldn't stop you from selling to the land trust at a lower price.
Right, but I would have to be compensated because the newspaper said that was part of the scheme, that there would be some compensation.
Well, that particular, the area you're talking about is not included in, not suggested as ascending, obviously, in this time.
Did I, did I misread that little map?
That's up there, sixty of it? I didn't think Blackmore Pond would be that.
The Rose Point area, I'm not sure where it is, where we're qualified, receiving area. If Jack was to sell his land, then he's not, then he has no rights that he transferred.
Okay, so, but I'm saying, is, is this...
Well, if, I didn't realize it was in R sixty, but if that were the case, you would have to have rights to the sending parcel in some way, under the current form.
I own those two house lots and I own these two parcels. And I'm just saying, can I build on those parcels and not build them on the Rose Point? And then this would be the compensation I'm looking for such that I could sell this very desirable, that I mentioned, it's on a pond, you can even see the pond on that map. So, it's just desirable, it's great.
It sounds like the same description you heard earlier of staying within the same zoning district.
It's the other side of one ninety-five and it's a different color in your map.
Oh, is it?
Like I say, I haven't done my homework and at last, I mean, can we say I, I may have some rights here with this thing facets or it just doesn't apply to me with my two lots here and my two lots there?
Does that show it in a receiving area? No, really.
No, it could be in theory, but the problem is, what I'm hearing, not a turn, is that you can't take the two, the two lots you own in Blackmore Pond, if you sell those to the land trust or whatever, just to sell them, you know, I don't think it maintains this transfer rights.
Okay, so, yeah, it doesn't say...
You would have to give, you would have to probably either give them.
Yeah, I, I do think that what I read in the newspaper misled me, but I'm saying that what I really like to do, shift, don't build on, in that area that's very desirable for open space or whatever we, terminology is.
It says shall be transferred, it doesn't mention a fee.
Okay.
The existing process says shall be transferred, it doesn't...
Okay, Bob, can I do that? I own these, I own those, I really own them. Now, can I transfer and build here instead of there? Is something, would we have to have, I mean, is it possible within this that this would allow me to, let's make a deal or not? I mean, I'm not as far as, Rose Point's got a lot of gravel roads anyways, right? So, I'm saying, don't make me come and improve the road too much and don't make me put in sidewalks. I mean, I just cut, I just, they cut me a little slack and if we do it and I think it will benefit everybody, is it possible? Or would we have to, I have to do my homework?
Well, what you've done, you've pointed out a particular...
Very particular.
Real-life situation...
Yeah.
That we'd have to plug into this to see if it works. Now, right now, you're looking to financially benefit when you dispose of that parcel after you've taken the development rights out of it. This particular rendition doesn't, isn't specific, says that the property will be transferred is one of the options you can do with it, but it doesn't say whether it's, no, someone...
Well, I know where these parcels are, I'm not a good owner, I'm just, I don't understand what you're telling me.
Well, as Alan's pointed out, once you've given up the development rights...
Do it simultaneously, I mean, right?
Yeah, but he's saying that you'd have to gift it to the land trust or to a nonprofit. He's not, once you've sold the development rights off, it has no value or very little value. So, that's an interesting, it just says transferred, it doesn't say whether he's a fee involved or not.
I command owning this property and I'm saying, can I come to the planning board and we look at what I'm asking for to get a building from it here and then I say I'm willing, you know, to give up the possibility of a building from it over here? Is that, I know you may be taking it to some bigger developments, but there's the question. And I guess we all have to...
Well, just because your example is small, doesn't mean the next one isn't going to be, you know, so...
Pardon?
Just because your particular example is a small, you know, it doesn't mean that the next one through the door isn't going to be. It's still the same question, just bigger.
And because, because there's some, a lot of people here waiting to talk and other subjects, can we say we all have to do our homework here because there's no, there's no quick answer?
Exactly.
Do we think there's a quick answer and...
Yeah, exactly. There isn't a quick answer without looking up the lots you're talking about and everything else and whether, whether, what's inferred here is...
Okay, well, if you, if you get to it, then you can think of my, my particular case and work it in your language, I'd be grateful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Actually, you can have a purchase and sale on another parcel, I don't know why you couldn't sell that.
He doesn't want to sell it.
He can keep all the ship in just nine...
Well, that's it.
But yes, through the...
He just has restrictions on that.
That's all he has to do and he's just looking for the asset value of the...
I have to state we need to...
He doesn't want to get paid.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Mark Logi and President of the Explorer. One relatively simple question. This reads pretty convoluted and interquant and my specific question is, will this PR allow the town to take land that's in a trust or an open space and deed it to an individual, property owner or business?
That is not within the scope of...
As I read, I don't see any wording that's pretty open.
That would have, if, you mean if the town were to take pot, land that the town owns currently in a receiving parcel?
Then give it to somebody.
That would be something you would have to, I would think that would be subject to town meeting vote and numerous layers of regulation. This, this particular bylaw in front of you does not have anything to do with who's conveying how the town does business. This is...
Fair enough. And that's what I thought, but again, it's relatively convoluted and it's just between two individual parties and how they handle their priorities then. At some levels, I'm okay with that. I did hear some gentlemen speak earlier and there are some real concerns with possibly some wording that should be a little more clarified. I do agree with them and it might not be a bad idea to get some ducks in a row and find some sort of law before it's presented again. I agree with them on that regard. Again, I was concerned that this would address what I presented.
Yeah, well, the town has a whole different criteria it has for disposing of property, and that's...
Okay, good luck, man.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Would like to make a recommendation this time? We've together...
Hold on, our recommendation for town meeting before...
You want to hold off and get through the areas?
Well, what's your pleasure? Do you want to, well, first, I guess we should close the individual public hearing. So, we should close the whole...
Close the public hearing on the transfer of development rights?
I'll say that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stated? Okay, any action to be taken on that score?
I'm going to take a motion to, you're holding off to what's spring.
Sure, you would make a recommendation before... That's not the technical term, I guess, but that'll work.
It's a good standing.
Oh, we'll see. A good standing work.
I think you probably want to make a recommendation, you know, the planning board would talk about this.
A motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Here we go, all in favor? Opposed? Sounds unanimous. The next? Is this working? I'm sorry, we voted to pull the article for this town.
Which one, George?
The transfer of development rights. Is this working at all or... Sorry about that. The next one we have up is the flood plain bylaw. If you've been following this at all, you'll remember a year or so ago, we passed an article very similar to this, as well as adjusted zoning bylaw to reflect the new flood plain maps. And then shortly after we did that, they were withdrawn because there were errors discovered. What you have before you is the numbers of the maps that have been changed, these are the new numbers that replaced the ones that erred and FEMA is asking us to accept them. Fortunately, I don't have the what ifs in front of me, but basically, failure to accept the maps would put people that require flood insurance in a position where they could not buy it, they could not redo it if they already had it. The FEMA may not pay off if there were a incident. I know there's a lot of conversation going on as to what's FEMA and what Congress has done to flood insurance and it's had a severe impact, but I, and I also know that there is a movement afoot to have all the towns put these down, but I do not feel comfortable advising you to do so. Yeah. Oh, if you want, I can help. The following sanctions will apply if a community is suspended from National Flood Insurance Program. Property owners will not be able to purchase flood insurance policies and existing policies will not be renewed. Federal grants or loans for development will not be available in identified flood hazard areas. Programs administered by federal agencies such as HUD, an Environmental Protection Agency, and the Small Business Administration would not be available. Federal disaster assistance would not be provided to repair insurable buildings located in identified flood hazard areas for damage caused by flood. Federal mortgage insurance or load guarantees would not be provided in identified flood hazard areas such as those written by the FHA and the Department of Veterans Affairs. And federally insured regulated lending institutions such as banks and credit unions allowed to make conventional loans for insurable buildings in the flood hammered areas in non-participating communities. for insurable buildings in the flood hazard areas in non-participating communities. However, the lender must notify applicants that property in a flood hazard area and that the property is not eligible for federal disaster assistance. Some lenders may voluntarily choose not to make these loans. Then it goes on, the same, if a community is suspended, it may be, it may regain its eligibility by enacting the floodplain management, the identified CFR. Say it's not a pleasant situation. Flood insurance doesn't just affect the big waterfront homes that you see. It's reaching into neighborhoods that never had to have flood insurance before and never had damage. It's creating quite a financial impact. We understand it, but we don't know how much you can do about it. Is there anyone here that wishes to comment on this?
All right, so, all right, so, a federal agency dredges around and sends us something that we have to go for. Absolutely absurd, in my estimation. And I'm gonna make my point here because I know no other way to make my point than to make it without. That if it's so important, then why didn't they mandate it? They didn't mandate it because they want five years from now to say, well, you voted for it. And what they're doing here is protecting insurance companies who made a risky investment in some areas that got hit down south. And they are spreading it out across the country and costing all of us. See, I was talking to some realtors today, and houses in Swiss Beach are being listed left and right. Because the people who live in them, a lot of seniors, by the way, can no longer afford to buy the insurance to protect the house that they live in, and they don't want to take a risk because it's the only thing they own that they're wanting. And this is the most absurdity I've ever seen in my life. And I think it's been ramroaming down everybody's throat. And the communities in this state are getting together somehow, and I don't know how that is. And I think we all need to reach out to each other. And not put up with this. Say no, we're not gonna do this. This is not what we should be doing to people. I mean, I know a guy owns a motel down in Yama. His insurance just went up sixty-eight thousand dollars. He's closing the hotel. Can't afford to pay sixty-eight thousand more dollars for a hotel.
Huh? It's gonna be a ghost town around here.
It is. It's going to be ridiculous. And the problem with our town, we're more affected by anybody else. Because guess what we have? More miles of coast than anyone else. And they're regrowing this down our throats. And it's just an awful thing to have happen to us. I, I, I don't know how to say it anymore. This is just so painstaking. I've talked to people every day who now can't afford to buy insurance for their homes. Now, the ones that don't have loans are lucky. They just don't buy it. They take their own risk. But the ones that have mortgages, they don't have any choice. They've got to buy the insurance or they'll pull their mortgage. This, you know, this is crazy. Somebody's gonna send a message somewhere, somehow, some way. I mean, to take, we've been using fifteen feet. Is that right, John? Fifteen feet? We've been using it forever. Now, where is it? Sixteen point two?
Depends on where you are.
Yeah, but it's not, the elevation. So, you know, you raise it a foot, it goes a lot further back. There's people in Swiss Beach that built houses on stilts and spent a lot of money to get up at that fifteen foot. Who are now back in the flood zone. Back in the flood zone after they spent a fortune to put their houses up above the flood zone. This is absurd. I know you guys don't have anything to do with this, but I know the people are listening. And I know the press is here, and I know this will get out. And I think people need to hear this. This is an atrocity, what they're doing to people. I mean, this one realtor listed five houses today all because of flood insurance. Because they all found out what it's gonna cost them for flood insurance. And they're all seniors who can't afford to live in the houses anymore.
What's even worse is probably some of these houses are seventy-five hundred years old and they've never been flooded.
Right. No, that's true. As you and I know, we've been around here long enough to know. I mean, everybody remembers Bob, and we, you remember Gloria, probably. And we remember all the way back. I mean, some of us are pretty old. We remember back to these storms that have never really caused us any problems. You know, sure, there's been a few houses, I remember Bob pushed a few houses off on Swiss Beach. But this is, what is it, G and A's house? It's still there. You should just open up the doors, let the water go through. Rebuilt the thing how many times over years? I mean, you know, right. I mean, come on, we know, we all know this stuff. And...
Good news, they'll be doing your health insurance soon.
Huh?
Good news, they'll be doing your health insurance soon.
Can you imagine this? Imagine the big, it's gonna come down for that one one day. They're gonna say, all right, now you must go to town meeting and vote to, you know, have a death squad or something. I don't know what it is. But this is getting really out of control. And somehow, somewhere, we've gotta make a stand on this thing. We really do. And I'm gonna vote against it. I'm gonna vote against it. I'm going to town meeting. I'm gonna vote against it. And I don't care what they have to say.
So could I put out your email address for the grassroots campaign?
Yeah, you absolutely can. PatrickGTroppianoYado dot com. And it's just, I'm, I'm sorry I had to come up here and say this, but I'm, I'm just, I don't take it kindly to people from outside our area, from outside of our town, who know nothing about our town, coming in here and telling us what we must and must not do. It's just not, it's just not right. It's not... Okay, I've had to...
Thank you, Chris.
Sorry.
Well, could I ask you something? Why isn't there a selectmen's in about this? Because it seems to me it's a voter selectman issue.
And you know...
Somebody should be taken in leadership position.
We talked about it already. We're working on it. We talked about it.
Well, what, what's happening?
There is a situation in Mashfield that started a suit against the...
There is a law act of the law. Well, is, is Wareham joining in?
You have to wait until they actually put this suit in. There's other cities and towns along the coast will join in.
Okay.
The problem we have is that if you do not accept the changes, you basically have the risk that people can have insurance. You know, they have to have it for the mortgage, for the mortgage, that their mortgage could be called in if they don't have any insurance. This is one of these, this is, this is what I call a burden, no matter what you do.
But what are the banks gonna do with all the houses they have to pay over?
Obviously, it's gonna be a situation that's gonna be a problem. And that's why it starts, start the situation first, because the person had a buyer, their insurance had gone up sixty thousand dollars. Then the residents realized what was happening. The situation, most of their, most of the whole block's insurance are all on the floodplain, period.
But all the houses that are around the market today are not gonna be sold because the insurance goes up sky high.
We're not, we're not disagreeing with anyone. The problem is the federal government through FEMA has made the decisions. We're at the bottom of the chain. All we can do is join the lawsuit once it's put in place.
You mentioned... You mentioned the banks. I know there are some banks that were writing a collective type insurance. I think it was a stop-loss policy on their own liability on flood holes. The downside to that is you don't need to get back the value of your mortgage. And I don't know if FEMA recognizes that insurance situation, but that is one way out. It's a...
I'd like to speak with the latest gentleman, proceed.
Well, that's why, that's why I came up on the topic here. Don't have all the, the work I had been looking into. There is a lawsuit right now against FEMA that's being acted right now. And it's, don't quote me on all of it, but what it basically is, is that FEMA has decided where there's been so much loss in certain parts of the country that the lawsuit is saying that they are trying to have the rest of the country pick up the tab for what has actually been lost. And what I wanted to know is, I understand it seems like we have to vote for this. But what I'm reading, reading now is that they don't have, like, they say a hundred-year floodplain and stuff. Well, their, their data doesn't show that. They say a hundred-year floodplain. It hasn't been a hundred years. They haven't been flooded that area. So what the lawsuit is stating that, that their documentation is, isn't accurate enough to provide the information that they need, okay? And like I said, it's active right now. I don't know if, where it can join in or not. But in it, it also says that a bank can, if you have had your mortgage with a bank and had flood insurance, if you don't get flood insurance, the bank cannot foreclose on your property. It has to, the banks now, as someone said, has a stop-loss program. The banks are gonna have to hold your property, your payment, your mortgage that came out, calling you to go in because you did not get flood insurance. I know it's an active lawsuit, I think we should look into it. But my question here, you gentlemen, is because of the lawsuit, is that, do we have to vote on this? Is it something we can put off to see the results of that? Are we in a position where we have to vote on that? That's my question I have. Where it's, this is gonna be a big issue in, in federal government. And I believe that the lawsuits were straight and all for everybody, but does that affect our vote, George?
You've got a, you've got kind of a double whammy going on here. You had Congress who voted to allow the flood insurance program to basically pay for itself. So anybody with any grandfathering rights that they used to have, now gonna see those disappear in a matter of three or four years, I believe. With drastic increases each year until everybody's paying the new rate. You used to be grandfathered, if your house was built to flood standards at the time of construction, if you were already in the flood insurance program as of a certain date, all those protections of you had to put the old rate are gonna go away. So that's jacking up your premiums. What these maps are doing is pushing the flood, the flood projection further inland. So your rates are going up, which this doesn't affect, but more people are gonna be in the plan, so.
I understand that. That's what I believe the lawsuit says today. They're doing that, FEMA's doing that without proper data to say that that's true. They're doing that, they believe that they're doing that for financial gain, a part of the country that have been hit hot. That's however, the lawsuit.
The meeting I attended, must have been over a year ago. They're basing their information on, number one, the ocean level has risen a foot. And there's a new way of calculating wave action, which...
This is a very sponsored, you know, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I don't know how many live on the water, but you notice the water a foot in there.
This lawsuit number joined in like the last month and a half, you know, so. I'd like to still, you know, okay, but when are we put, put the vote off for towns? If, I, I just don't, I wanna do the right thing, obviously. But I don't wanna say our vote's gonna jump the conclusion to lock us into something that down the road's gonna be wrong. You know, by putting it off, is that something that'll hurt us to wait and see the outcome of things? Or do we jump into fire and vote and it's gonna hurt us down the line? I'm just looking for what, you know, the right answer, you know? And I don't know if anyone here can give us the right answer.
I don't have that.
But you think by waiting to, you know, putting this off and seeing outcome of some of these important items that are coming up right now, because it's right in the forefront?
I think that's a question we should ask. That we should find out about. I think the selectmen should step up and find that question out. That's a good question. And there's no question, I just want to say one other thing. There's no question that they're spreading the losses out around the country. And by spreading the map further inland, where it's likely to never be any damage, they've balanced the trust on the backs of those people.
And that's what, basically, you're a hundred percent right. But basically, that's what the lawsuit is saying then. They're expanding the thing without proper data. That's, that's, that's my point. Thank you, gentlemen.
Go back up.
Okay, good. Hi, I'm Chris Imich, from South Water Street, answer. I've got a couple of questions, really. First, the timeframe shown on the bottom of this page. Is my answer any correct? We're basically at the end of this? We missed all these opportunities to appeal and so on and so forth?
I'm afraid so.
How did that happen?
This is twice now. They let us know, we seem to get wind of these changes at the end of any appeal period when there's nothing we can do about it.
Isn't that an appeal justification itself? It would seem to me that, I mean, the government's trying to do a screw job, and we're getting screwed because we have no information whatsoever to respond to.
I think the last time that they came in with the map changes, we've got basically the same article you have in front of you the day before the war closed. They said, here, you have to pass this.
Well, Mr. Troppiano, I mean, isn't that a basis for, for a serious discussion? I mean, how can we be held to something that is, you know, poised upon us with no chance to appeal? And, and further to that?
You would think that we're just against the law or generally, we need to have a voice.
Well, I think these, these hearing processes are probably in the federal register or someplace that's obscure enough that you and I don't see it. We don't check it every week, you know, that's... So when they put out a notice of, of an appeal or a notice of a public hearing on that level, the notification is missed by most people.
And nobody in the Massachusetts government cares about this? I mean, none of our, they don't care about this?
Well, I think, I think this whole process is gonna put everything under the looking glass because it's, it's caught some attention, you know? Everybody is irate, to say the least. And so it's, it's put this under a little bit more public scrutiny than they felt it would want.
I mean, the, the other, the other question I had, which I guess we've just answered because there's no appeal time left, there's no chance of doing anything. But, I mean, in Onset Bay, we've suddenly entered the high-velocity zone with three and a half-foot wave water, which is probably unrealistic. I've not seen a wave more than six inches. And we've been there fifteen years. And, and neighbors who are here as well, they're just about fifty feet up the hill and they're in flood zone. So it's kind of ridiculous. I mean, there are major areas in the way they're drawing and defining these areas. And yet we still have no chance to respond.
I know years ago, I got a call that I should buy flood insurance, and I'm at least fifty feet above sea level. I told them, if I need it, it's time to build an ark.
Well, I mean, talking about fifty feet, I mean, I called into the town a few weeks ago to ask what I would have to do to avoid flood insurance. I was told that I'd need to have my house eighteen feet above mean tidal waters where we are in South Water Street. So it's illogical to me that if I raise my house to eighteen feet, my neighbors are fifty feet already, they're still in the floodplain. Can anybody shed any light on that? I mean, I may have to be a bit polite to raise my house.
You'd have to, you'd have to apply for individual elevation certificates.
No, no, it would probably be difficult then. I can get an elevation certificate,
Yeah.
which is gonna tell me that I'm basically at ten feet or thereabouts. But the town told me that I had to raise my house to eighteen feet to be out of the floodplain. Now, eighteen feet is not saying it's fifty feet. Do I have to raise my house fifty feet? I mean, where is...
No, they're just not recognizing his house or something.
If, if the salesman is in an area which he's pretty confident is fifty feet above sea level, he's...
Oh, no, no, no. I, I, I am about ten feet above sea level.
Okay.
I'm, I'm at the sea level fifty feet.
If you're ten, if you're ten feet above sea level, then you're already in the flood zone.
I got that. I got that.
Okay.
The question is, if I have to raise my house, do I have to raise it ten feet or do I have to raise it fifty feet? Because the town told me eighteen feet was the cutoff to where I am on South Water Street.
Okay.
But that's illogical if my neighbors who are fifty feet above sea level still have a floodplain problem.
You're talking about two different things.
No, I'm not. I'm talking about the same thing.
In terms of, in terms of the elevation, you are. If, if your neighbor has, if they're fifty feet above sea level, but they're shown on the map to be in, in a flood zone,
Right.
they can apply to FEMA or a map exemption or a lot exemption. Wish with a proper elevation certificate and you submit the information to FEMA, they will take you out of that flood zone for your specific property.
Do you want to...
There's a, there's a procedure that you can go through with FEMA.
They try it.
Well, if, clearly the elevations are above that, they're on the map. And it needs to be what they call a letter of map amendment, which clearly states that he's outside the flood zone. If your intensity and the elevation of the flood zone where you are is eighteen, to be in compliance, yes, it'd have to be up another eight feet.
Yeah, which I can do. I mean, we don't wanna be the first ones to do it on our street policy. And I don't wanna throw a hundred grand unnecessarily at it. But, uh, I mean, basically, we might be the only guys on stilts. We have a lot of, you know, deserted houses, a lot of areas that we don't have.
There have been, uh, incidents noted where even people with elevation certificates have been told by the bank they want it anyway. And in that case, they just say, "Give it to the bank."
Mr. Chairman, can I go ahead and request the referral to me?
You can take over, I think I've said what I can serve.
Well, Chris.
I just hope that we're gonna get some sort of coordinated effort going here between the towns and that by the state, somebody knows how to deal with these people.
Well, just so you understand, what this by law, what this change does is it accepts the new maps and keeps the status quo.
But even though they have to be wrong?
If you wanna start some sort of anti-FEMA...
No, but it's, there are two issues.
That's not what we're doing here.
I understand, but there are two issues really. One is the ridiculous pricing, and the other one is the flood maps are wrong. I mean, here is one example, and, um, the, the velocities on the onset bay is another example. I mean, they're clearly wrong. So how do we, do we accept them knowing that they're wrong?
Mr. Chairman, uh, first of all, you started off with Chris saying that you received this information the day before it was too late to respond to it, correct? Well, going back to this lawsuit that we're talking about, and I think it should be pursued right away, so they won't say, "You should've been here yesterday, it's too late now." I think we should take the lead on this and get our footing right along, say, "We don't want them to say, 'You should've called us last month, we did, we called you two months ago, get back into it.'" What Chris is referring to is that in nineteen ninety-nine, I purchased a house on Eight Hammond Street, and I wanted to put a full basement in the beach. And I came down to the building department, they got it. Two building inspectors said, "Let's check and make sure you're not in the flood plain." So they checked it all off and they said, "You're not in the flood plain by two and a half houses." So they gave you the permit and I put the basement in my house. The new FEMA map puts me in the flood zone, not only in the flood zone, but the very worst flood zone, the VE section. Now, I don't know how that could happen because there's people in that area closer to, further up the street, and they're not in the VE. I have to get into the work. So we went, we got an elevation survey. Because we're so high up on Hammond Street, we felt that with this tide and gigantic waves, it's not gonna get there. Our elevation showed us that if we raised our furnace six inches and we raised our hot water tank six inches, we would be out of the flood plain. Now, that doesn't even make sense.
And what's your elevation survey, Bill? Remember the height?
No, I, I, I'd have to have it in front of me to quote from it. But there's so much inequity in this, and it's just so screwed up. It's, it's just a bad situation for very, very...
So if there also has...
I've, I've listened to the talk shows.
If we're underwater, I mean, if there also has a flood, that house would be submerged totally, which is just ridiculous.
But I, once again, I'd like to ask the, uh, the board to look into the possibility of getting involved in that lawsuit so that we won't be in a position down the road where they say, "It's too late, we should've been here last week."
And we just rubber stamping, somebody knows it's wrong and ridiculous. I mean, we're just going along to the right, it's not the way to do business, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything further to be said on?
I mean, matter. Does anyone look at the, um, a lot of the property values are going down with this vote? Does anyone from the town look at how much money the town is going to the taxes? In the whole area?
Hold on a second.
It doesn't have, it doesn't have, because you have two and a half with fixed, it never goes down. What will happen is the tax burden shifts somewhere. Houses along the water, but the valuation goes down, so the house is inland water.
Yeah, absolutely. So there's no difference in the taxes?
No.
You'll raise the same amount of money, but instead of, instead of your waterfront properties being more valuable, they'll be less valuable.
So the town will be paying more in taxes?
Correct.
Or your rate will, either your value will go up or your rate will go up.
So is that, I've spoken to a few people in town, has that been understood by, that really needs to be expressed more than it has been?
About two months ago, the board of selectmen rounded up that this was an issue. Uh, we've contacted Representative Keating, which is a federal representative about the whole issue. This is what they call the Biggard Waters Bill. Because the people that put this in have no idea what they were doing. Uh, Mrs. Waters, who I think is from California, if I remember right, uh, is in process of, of, we understand it's most likely gonna file a bill to rescind what's happened. Because what happened is this bill is the bill that allows these rates to change. The FEMA maps are one thing, but the actual changing of the rates and everything else caused by this particular bill that was put together, there's a lot of, obviously, kickback from all over the country. This went in and it was like, as soon as it went in, we got information what was happening. Wareham has fifty-four miles of coastline. My comment at the board of selectors meeting was, "We got a problem. We're gonna get hit because we're, we have a lot of, what they call low-income areas. We have areas in Swiss beach, no place where people are, you know, fixed incomes accepted. Where are they gonna pay this increased insurance?" So we're, it's not like we ignored it. We knew what was happening and we basically have, you know, made the first steps that we can make.
How much of Wareham is in the parway level?
I don't have a percentage though, but I'm gonna say that our population, because we have such a wide range, you know, compared to where you live and stuff and some of the other areas, I mean, there's just huge differences. You know, we've got a hundred and thirty pieces of property in Wareham that are well over a million dollars. And then we have other properties that are, you know, we have over, almost a lot of hundred, local homes.
So we find a lot of these people defaulting on there.
Our comments, when this first came out, which I think this paper's carried, was we would consider people would have, would be defaulting. What are the banks gonna do? Because at a certain point in time, if people don't pay in default, is it gonna be like what's happening right now with the loans? Where banks let people stay in the house, paying them whatever they can because the banks can't, don't really wanna pull the houses back. And they're running a year behind with no foreclosure.
So is town really just a water some problem, a whole town problem? I think that really needs to be brought up a lot more.
It was, well, it was...
Not by you, but...
It was brought out in the beginning, but let me say, it's very difficult at the town level because the, there's nothing happening at the state level so far. At the federal level, we don't, or we can't initially, but it's frustrating because, you know, we're, one, you need, you need, you have every, every state that's along the coast in particular, all of us, the country, to get up and say, "Hey, enough's enough, no more."
Right.
Was there any response from Keating?
I can't, I can't answer that because that looks to the chairman of the board of selectmen. I've not seen a lot of response yet.
I may just continue, I agree, but you get involved in the lawsuit as possible.
Well, I don't think, I don't think they have much choice, I mean, because, you know, situating, I'd say, my feelings now. We just have to see if that, if it can actually implement the suit and then we can join up.
Do we now, as they voted for it, to agree with the new FEMA map? Would that affect the lawsuit? Would they come back and say, "Oh, well, you voted for it," so...
I think, 'cause I'm not a lawyer, I'm not making a joke, any state of college, it's present. I think the real question we asked that town council, which I'm doing right now as we're talking, asking the question is, what if we either don't vote for it or if we basically put it off, what the effect would be for the town? 'Cause I can't answer that, I don't think Patrick can answer that. I don't wanna, I don't wanna do something that's gonna hurt people by not voting for it as well. And that's my real problem. Patrick and I voted no on this issue at the board of selectors meeting, it's kind of favorable action. I voted no because I was completely against the whole program, understood. Patrick was more, more the image than I was, just, no, it's unfair, they're not gonna vote for it. So that's who we're at, but it's, I just, I'm afraid that if we vote, if we turn around, that we're gonna hurt some people in the beginning, it depends on the lawsuit. Cross the lawsuit, flood insurance, and what the banks will do. I don't have a clue, you know, the base control will run for this, so they feel like being nice, they can, they feel like being hard.
Some people right now, their mortgages, well, their, their flood insurance will be twice what their mortgage is.
Depending where they live.
Nobody's gonna vote for it, it just can't.
And you can't...
This town has the lowest per capita income of any town on the...
If you put your house on the market, the new buyer, the insurance goes up.
Oh, yeah, you're already... What do you think about October one?
Okay, uh...
It's already affected.
While I feel your pain, I think...
It's already affected the housing market, there've already been housing sales that have been, you know, been canceled out. So, because this insurance change, it was effective October first.
You imagine it's been affected from October first, if we haven't accepted anybody yet.
Yes.
Yeah, they weren't...
Excuse me. Excuse me.
What are the changes this year? Do you have any idea what the changes FEMA may or?
The maps are all, the, what they had proposed on there earlier were isolated changes on half a dozen panels, maybe?
Five or six points.
Uh, and what they've done is corrected those and sent them back. And renumbered all the panels. And there was, uh, in their verbiage, there was some errors in, in the, a couple of sentences that they corrected.
They've, they've taken areas that were, you know, at the worst, they've taken areas out. They've taken areas that were in the middle range and put them out in the white zone, which means nothing. So the new maps are less, uh, harmful than the ones before. So actually, those maps will save some people from where they're, so it's not, they're not worse than where they're actually at for the residents, that's the other issue.
And those maps are part of the available...
I don't...
They're available in the inspection department and they're also available online.
Online, yeah. If you look online, you can see, I live on Oak Street, and, uh, prior maps had us in blue, in DC or whatever. Now we're in the white, which means we have no, we have no flood, that whatsoever, from one map to the other.
Thank you.
Alan? I think if they go to the building inspector, he has some conversations with someone from FEMA and they have an exact eye on us as to what changes and where they're changing. So they can check if the building inspector's office...
That's right, yeah, I believe, they've got, there's only like five or six plates on it total.
But that was on the previous set of maps, which already impacted a lot of people.
Those maps are on the table, I, um, I told inspector, I said, "I wish I was aware of them," you know, yeah.
Just to give you an idea, we very quickly looked at the new maps. I was looking through, and I was looking at the Hammond School. The Hammond School, right now, the newest FEMA map is located where the Oak Road is. So...
Are the new maps down near the hall?
It should be.
Just, just to add to this tale, I live on South Water Street and nobody can ever find their house because it doesn't show on any map, anywhere. Um, UPS sometimes can't do that, but FedEx calls up and says they don't know where we are. Um, the town doesn't show South Water Street as existing. And, uh, Google doesn't either. North Water Street is there, but not South Water Street.
But you still get your tax bill.
FEMA will, but you're underwater.
Thank you, everyone. As I said, we all feel your pain. In fact, I think I have a piece of property that's impacted by it. I would say, while we feel there's a message that needs to be sent, I think that has to be done on an individual basis. The selectmen can handle it, townwide. Anything further? We're looking to a promotion to close the public hearing on the FEMA maps. That's how it's described, one twenty-five. Okay, we're gonna table the vote on our recommendation pending vice of counsel. Next up, we have the Medical Marijuana Treatment Center zoning bylaw here in Deonne. Thanks for hanging out, man. So I think everybody's up to speed. Last, uh, election or somewhere thereabouts, the ballot approved the use of medicinal marijuana in the state of Massachusetts. At that time, there was no regulation attached to the petition. So Towne Wayham voted to put a moratorium on incentives pending the, uh, the regulation to be drawn up by Department of Public Health. They've since completed their work. And what this article seeks to do is place that particularly use in a zoning district in the Towne Wayham. Uh, what we've proposed is placing it in the institutional district, which is basically, uh, around the hospital area. It goes from roughly Main Street to High Street, maybe Cedar Street on one end and just, uh, with the north of the hospital on the other. There's traditionally been medical office space there in that area. And we thought that would be a safe, accessible location for such a treatment center, should one choose to locate in Wayham. There is no proposal that I know of of anyone to locate one of these treatment centers in the town. And this is just following through. Our moratorium will expire next spring, Springtown, roughly around Springtown, maybe. And, uh, decided to put this in here and place the use in the, in the zoning bylaw. If anyone has any questions, John?
Joe, it's just clarification. Doesn't the institutional district include everything down to Long Meadow? Including the high school, including the town hall and all of Marion Road up to High Street? Uh, it's changed a few years ago.
It may, but the, uh, I believe the Department of Public Health regulations keep it a certain distance away from schools and, uh, and...
But, but your zoning act is to allow it to be used in the institutional zone. All I'm saying is it includes more land than just around Toby Hospital because it goes down, I remember writing the description a number of years ago, and it goes, I believe, a small...
I think it does include the school area, but...
Well, includes that, Long Meadow and all of Marion Road on this side.
Yeah.
And then back up to High Street.
I wasn't thinking Towne Wayham property, that's my description. Dominic?
Yes, Mr. Director. Do we have to allow it in the town? Is that something that the town, does it want to exempt it? Or is it has, it has to be accessible?
It has to be allowed to use somewhere in the town.
I think I remember that if you don't have a place to put it, then go to it.
In fact, some of the moratoriums were rejected for that reason. It was like a lifetime moratorium.
Exactly. Yeah, how to good that. We had a problem circa two years ago.
That was my question too, if there are any, if it's done to prevent it from coming to town. So if that's already been answered, then the second question is, if one was coming to town, if there are financial benefits or potential financial benefits to the debt?
Uh, maybe the selectmen could answer that, I don't know.
First of all, the way these are set up, they're nonprofit, they'll be 501(c)(3), so I'm not sure there'll be any tax cuts, but obviously, we're doing a nonprofit. Uh, the state of Massachusetts, when they pass, people voted for this. Uh, the initial is five clinics per county. So there's already nineteen applications, I think, in twenty counties. Uh, they're filing, we're sending actual files with, with the state, I believe. Also, they have to put a, they do actually can go ahead with this. Uh, it's a half a million, I think it's fine, half a million dollar bond they have to put up. Uh, the other issue is that Weston tried to oblige and say no, which the gentleman was asking. The attorney general came back almost immediately and said, "Thank you, but no thank you," or told, "No way you can do it." It's very much like a cell tower type of thing. You have really no choice per se, but you can't, what you do have is the ability to pick up the way you, the way you allow it. That's the public duty to do. We have a one-year timeframe from the time we pass the moratorium. We have a one-year timeframe from the time we pass the moratorium, which we wrote for, you know, the Springtown meeting, and we did that right away, because the law was coming in, they hadn't done any of the rules at all, and if we could put a moratorium in, we have no idea what the conditions would be, so we wrote a moratorium. And we do ask, within one year's time, actually put an actual, you know, bylaw in place. I mean, technically, you could put it off, I think you'd get it June, so in theory, it could be June of next year, but once you get past that date, then you're taking trouble.
I just wonder why some initiative petitions just fall by the wayside, and others get passed at lightning speed.
Okay, all right, not the visualizing, plenty of room, but in the rules regulations, can the town charge, or can the town, maybe I'm told to fee to allow a company to, to commit?
Well, it's, it's a Department of Public Health operation or regulation, so I would think the Board of Health would have enforcement powers and maybe licensing powers.
Yeah, I mean, you can make an astronaut, cool figure, and, you know, I'm saying.
No, I think that was, I think the attorney general was.
We all know what non-profit ownership is, we just, we direct this law, that's a non-profit, I mean, that's easy, everyone knows non-profit.
They wouldn't allow this. I would rather see a medical marijuana center than another liquor store.
Well, I don't, I'd say we have a couple of different clinics in town that.
Yes, we do.
Go unscathed and miss, just gets zoning started.
We have a medical.
We have two, maybe three.
I didn't even know that.
Anything further on the medical marijuana bylaw? There are none, I'd like to propose a public hearing. I want to thank you, Charlie. Michael's second in it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Thank you. Any other further action on that? Motion for favorable action?
Motion for favorable action on the medical marijuana bylaw?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Sold. Pull up your sleeves. Time for the sign bylaw. As you see, on the proposed sign regulations, there was a pretty good explanation there. Promote safety, comfort, well-being for the use of the streets, roads, and highways of the Towne Wayham by reducing potential distractions and obstructions of signs that would adversely affect traffic safety, alleviating hazards caused by signs projecting over or approaching open ways. Discouraging excessive visual competition in signage, ensure science aid orientation, preserving and enhancing the character of the town by requiring new and replacement signage that is creative and distinctive, compatible with surrounding area and surrounding architecture, appropriate to the type of activity which it retains. Excessive in the identity of individual proprietors or of the community as a whole, and appropriately sized in its context so to be easily read, and to clarify the town officials, which town officials handle the enforcement. And I would ask that, anyone has a comment? Step forward.
I have quite a list of things that I could give you, but I'll get them to you later, I'll give you a whole list of the things that are, are sort of problems, one is the billboards, if you change the billboard, they gotta go. The same thing with illuminated signs, and signs that change all the time, they do another thing, it says if you change the letters on the sign, or you do anything to the signs, you gotta meet the new requirements, and these signs are changeable letter signs, that's what they do. We have one, the school department has one right over here, as soon as technically, they are exempt in the bylaw, but if they, if somebody had a sign like that, as soon as they changed the letters on it, they would have to go, they'd have to meet the new bylaw. That's the way, that's some of the problems that are inside of us. But my biggest issues with this is that I think that this bylaw doesn't hurt anybody except the small business, the small guys are gonna get hurt out of this, the big guys aren't gonna get hurt. You take, if I take all the signs down at McDonald's and you drive by it, you're gonna know it's McDonald's? Absolutely, you are, because their building is a sign. If you go by Walmart, I take Walmart's sign down, you're gonna know it's Walmart, because their building is a sign. The little guys aren't, aren't in that same ballgame, their buildings are not signs, they can't compete with that kind of signage that they have just based on their building structure as a whole. And unfortunately, small business actually creates more jobs than anyone else. Okay, now, I'm not saying that our bylaw, our sign bylaw, doesn't need some tweaking, but we have one right now that's never been enforced anywhere, never. I mean, there's, I can tell you right now, it's not a bad bylaw, but it's never enforced, never. And if we just enforced the real bylaw, the original bylaw, we'd have this problem. The other problem I have with, with signage, is the special permit process. The special permit process is conducive for big business. Little guys, they're not gonna spend money to get lawyers, they're not gonna come in here, they're not gonna try to get a sign, because it costs them too much money, they don't have the money, they're not gonna do it, it's just not gonna happen. But the guys like, you know, Walmart puts up a new store, or somebody else moves into a new location that's a big company, they're gonna come into you and they're gonna say, we need a sign, and you're gonna say, well, we can't give you that sign because of this, this, and this. They're gonna go out, they're gonna get experts to say, well, we've solved this, this, and this, and then they're gonna go to court, they're gonna say to the judge, well, we did exactly what they said, we solved this, this, and this problem, then they have to give us a thing, and of course, we all know, you've been through this before, you've been here a long time, right?
Must be talking to him.
Yeah, Mike's been here a long time too, Mike looks at here forever too, right? And you know what happens, we lose those cases all the time, because they come in and they say what it is, and they, you know what I'm saying, and we lose them.
One, one thing is, if they can't afford to go through the special permit process, then they can make a sign that complies.
Well, that's, well, there's no question they can do that, but the signs that comply are not necessarily the signs that compete, but we have a lot of restaurants out there, a lot of restaurants on the strip, and the restaurants are trying to attract business and whatever, we have a pretty good strip out there of restaurants, in fact. And most of them have signs that to this bylaw wouldn't comply, in fact, they all, not one of them would probably comply to this bylaw. Okay, if they sell their restaurant to somebody else who's gonna come in and do it, they gotta meet the new requirement, so take down those signs and put up new signs. Even though it's the same restaurant, they run in the same way, in the same location, take it down, let's put a new sign. You know, I'm just saying, this is, this, no, that's exactly what it says. You want me to read that to you? I can read that section to you. Matter of fact, I underlined it. Change of ownership is one of the criteria that says it's gotta go, right here. Other than sign maintenance, non-conforming signs, non-conforming signs, and supporting structure shall be reconstructed, remodeled, relocated, any change in ownership of the property, other business, shall require the sign will conform to the respects of the body, within forty-five days. So, if I, I don't know, let's pick somebody out up there, Bailey's, I buy Bailey's, her sign really is bigger than the bylaw allows, and especially if you take the cumulative total, which the bylaw tends to wanna do, unless you're big, unless you've done one-by-one things. Okay, it takes the cumulative total, what's on my building, and what's my sign standing out front and so on, as soon as I buy that business, I'm no longer big, I gotta take it down, put in the smaller sign, take the sign off the building, do whatever, and now, I'm pretty secure compared to everybody else on the strip. I'm just saying.
Well, I think in that particular instance, it probably should say change of use, not change of ownership.
Well, if that's the case, then maybe you should think about these things, I have a list of stuff, I'll get it to you, you can play with it and do whatever, just so you know, and I'm not saying that our bylaw doesn't need tweaking, I'm just saying, I also question the timing for this. The businesses are struggling up there, guys, this economy is atrocious, and they're struggling up there, and to put more sign regulation on them, and make them meet new requirements, and do new kinds of things, it's not really a good time, it's just not good timing. Those businesses are the lifeblood, in a lot of cases, in this community, a lot of us folks work in those businesses. And, you know, I'm not talking about the Walmarts of the world, because they don't employ all the people, the small business employs all the people, they're the ones with the good jobs. You know, the Walmarts of the world, they, they just out of the Walmarts of the world, and as far as I'm concerned, they could all go away. Okay, but the small business, the people that are citizens, and the people we live with, and the people that live down the street from me, and the people who live down the street from these folks, and you guys, and everybody else who have these businesses, those are the people that matter to me. And anyway, I'll, I'll get you a list, I'll make sure you have it, and I'll type it up and get it to you in the next couple of days, I'll make sure you have it so you can look at it. Okay, in the meantime, I just, I, I, my kid's away, I'm gonna go home and feed him, that's why I kind of rushed up here, but. They're, they're, my phone's been ringing off the wall, so I appreciate you taking your time to listen to me, and thanks a lot.
Anyone else? Well, that was one of the concerns, the construction proposed for February Highway, it was, it was a concern about the.
That was the intent to.
Mr. Chair, isn't the current sign bylaws really doesn't have any provision for the enforcement by the inspectors, inspectors, enforced with penalties that would, you know, prompt some of you having non-conforming signs to perform? Is that part of the reason that this was being?
That was a quite a, a form of, you know, director of inspection services and the labor instructor, and they had to place the, the, that's, that's the reason it's all started. Patrick, I talked to you earlier today about section 111a, non-conforming signs, I think what we can do very easily for, and get this out, you know, for Towne, it's very difficult, is if you go with the section A, I mean, first of all, there's, even with part two, it's probably five.
Number one.
A, your first sentence said, no non-conforming sign, common law, non-conforming sign again, that's, that's gotta come up on any of us, we need one of those, see what I mean?
Doesn't need the twice.
You know, it's in there, we just missed, we've gone through it too many times, what I would do is go down, and where it starts, with the word, the third line down right in the beginning, all content, start from where that word all content is, and we'll make that sentence all the way down through all different logo, so you'll start up again, basically, supporting structure, certain model, you'll pay that change in the sign, unless such action will make the sign, conforming in all respects, so we'll take out the content, because the content has to do like billboard, and some others, and there's really no way to write something in there because of change of ownership, et cetera. So, if you take out that one section there, I think that would be acceptable, everybody, and that takes it to the town billboard site, that allows, allows you to change the message on a daily, monthly, whatever the basis is. And the other piece that Patrick just mentioned, I think that's the fifth line down, starting the fourth line, does any change in, in use, random ownership? Use the word use, I think that pays clearly what was there.
There was one, there was one section, and there were talks about closed businesses or vacant. Says sign must be removed, I think, within thirty days.
Yeah, that, that language there is, in there, because at the end of the building, you know, director of inspection service, et cetera, complain about, you know, these issues come out, and the sign gets stuck there, you know, if it has it, whatever else has to come down, and they had no safety hazard, this hasn't, has no common meaning, that if it's a safety hazard, then the building inspector has to like to take it down, but it's not the only property, it's not taking use to.
Well, the question would be, if the company, if the business is gone, who's gonna take the sign down?
Well, whoever owns the property, is they on the side.
My question on that is, not necessarily that the sign should be removed, and I'm thinking more of a, a sign that might be on a building where the face could be removed, and just made white, so that the next business that goes in wouldn't have, you know, the.
That was my next point, how much of it has to be ruled, if you're gonna take off the identifying.
In other communities, they make you take down the writing part of the sign, but you could leave the structure of the sign in place, and when you take down the writing part, you must put something there to fill that void, whether it's just a blank sheet of some nature or something, I don't know how it's worded in other communities, but I know that that is something that is addressed.
George, you mentioned with this, with this section, because it comes later on, about sixty days later on.
Sixty days.
Another thing we want to do.
Yeah.
Seventy-four and days, any sign that has to be removed, we're gonna, if there's something else, something that I've heard, could be this, the event of business, or it ceases operations, or has to move the site within sixty days, I think there's something else before that, I suppose, on my own.
There is.
Maybe section 111a. Is there another way to word that, other than the word sign? Yeah, you can do it if you want.
I'm just looking for the, where we're affiliated to the discretion of the inspection services to determine what part of the sign needs to be removed?
Well, that's kind of a tough spot, it's because I've seen, over the years, I've seen the, the existing town sign bylaw interpreted in a couple of different ways by a couple of different inspectors, so.
I think the key is, is to remove the announcement of the business that's there, or whatever it is, it's, so, whether it, we wanted to remove the face of the sign, I mean, I don't say remove, I think it should be removed and replaced with a blank face, so that it doesn't look a lot of the, in the street.
Remove the message.
Remove the message, but replace it with a blank.
But shoot the message.
There is a section that it's referenced before. Got it?
You're getting a follow-up. No, okay.
There was, that's why, I was wondering.
What can we do about all these traffic signs down the other main street? Talk about sign clutter. Well, it does talk. I know what a pedestrian crossing looks like, I don't need a sign in every single one of them. Especially a flashing LED sign. What are we gonna talk about, please?
Just had to put it out there, I don't think it'd kill me.
I, in other communities, you know, those are put on a twenty-four hour window, you could put up what you'd like to, for a message.
No, I was talking about the pedestrian crossing sign, the flashes on the main street.
Oh, the flashing signs that we have in the town, where a number of towns require that message to stay affixed for twenty-four hours at a minimum, and then you can change it, so. If you're announcing, and I think that's a good, you know, you talk about sign law being a safety issue, you get something that flashes, people are just gonna be curious and wanna see what it is, and they're going to turn their head if they're driving by, so.
I think an eyeball looking at me down February Highway does nothing to make me wanna limit our business, so.
I didn't find the, found the other section that talks about the removal of the sign. I haven't found the, found the other section that talks about the removal of the sign.
That was the only one in.
The only thing you could do in B, if you wanted, you'd have to change P. Does that one talk about the property owner removing the sign? You have to modify 1121B, I guess. I can't find it anywhere else. Cause it says C, "A legal sign shall be subject to removal provisions of Article 111A." That's, that's strictly non-conforming signs. I think 111A just talks about how we can make the sign conform. Because on 111A, we've already changed the, on that line five, we change in use of the property. We require that it's, the sign be, be covered from bylaws, not ownership. So that piece is already up, change the rest. How would you like to change 1121B? And here, 1122. Will it eliminate that?
I think it's important to have for the, for the community. I think it's important to have businesses that are gone, their signs removed and cleaned up.
Well, that's why it was put in there originally. That's what the, that's what the board.
I'd like to see some, just some verbiage added to clean it up in reference to, you know, that the, the face of the sign needs to be removed, uh, announcing the business at that point, just.
Take the face out, still have the metal structure.
You have to put a new face, a blank face hang. In, in the city of Brockton, that's one of the things that, that I had to do in the past. We had, uh, a tentacle vote. We had to put up a white face and then we made blocks until someone else writes it. Or you, you're, they do allow you to put a police sign up, but...
I just stumbled across something I hadn't noticed before.
What page is it?
Uh, page one, uh, two, rather. "Director, Director of Inspection Services and his duly op, or his duly authorized agents shall at reasonable times and on present day have the power to enter upon a premises on which said sign is erected or maintained and repair or remove or cause to be repaired or removed said sign. All expenses incurred by the Director of Inspection Services or his agent in repairing or removing any sign shall be assessable against the person."
Unfortunately, that's not the complete language.
Has counsel looked at that?
Yeah.
Do they have to wear armbands and just who step in when they do it?
If you want to change it around, we can change it around. Like I say, this is just, you know... It preexists already, it's nothing we laid up from scratch.
Yeah, that's, that's very similar of the fire department, said the same exactly.
Same language, it's a, it's a standard way to hit the oil play, right?
The premises, you know, at reasonable times, I mean, it's, it's kind of oil play most laws.
Just a little, uh, you can't read it all with the sound machine going on.
Sound machine? So.
I mean, the, the fire department, they had that, they had greater enforcement because it's public safety, but I could sign it, yeah.
Yeah, but for inspections, fire departments, just the routine inspections, have the right to enter at, at reasonable hours to, to perform inspections and that's basically, it's, it's the language.
Can you inflict repairs?
No.
Make repairs of somebody else's property without...
I think this would change to a potentially dangerous situation where the inspector has noticed that the sign has either been affected by the wind or a vehicle or something, needs to have it repaired and maybe the property owner's not available, so they immediately cause the repair to occur. Does that make sense?
I don't know, and are they gonna come in and change light bulbs, you know?
No, I mean, it, to me, I would think would tie in as maybe Charlie's referenced, to an emergency service situation that could be dangerous to the public or something of that nature, so.
They, they certainly should have the right to, to enter the property and inspect the sign. Whether they have further rights to, to have a sign removed, you know, that may, you know, be taking it a little, another step, you know? Fire department, we have a right to win immediately unless it's something that's immediate life or danger, you can't remove it.
Right.
You, you cite the person, uh, you go up to the courthouse, file a complaint and, and the person has to appear, uh, before the clerk magistrate or whatever. Uh, this, this, this basically says that he has the power to, uh, remove or cause to be repaired and that's going a, a little, you know, you should be able to cite the person or something somehow or other. I don't know about, unless it's a, unless it's a, something that's leaning over and it's endangering, you know, property, uh, or somebody could get injured because of it, I, I think they might pretty slippery slope to start tearing down someone's sign.
I was under the impression that the Director of Inspection Services had some comments on this? Have they been related to you?
He had no, um, I asked him today again, he had no actual issue with any of it. It just, his only concern was that, uh, how many people are gonna look at this and call it, complaining about a neighbor or somebody, the amount of extra work is gonna probably all at once cause it's a full encompassing, uh, sign by law, rather, a couple of little changes.
Well, that's, that's been my observation over the years. It's not so much people object to a sign, they just think it doesn't meet the bylaw, so they complain.
Yeah.
They don't necessarily find it offensive or anything else, but they know what's wrong.
Well, right now, the problem is they get complaints all the time and the way it's written, they can't force it out, so.
Yeah.
Which way do you wanna flip the coin?
It certainly gives a P.
You don't do it, you, you do it one way or you don't do it other way. Going back to 112 and then we'll go back on B. Do you wanna put something in the language? You wanna write where the sign face goes to a blank sign face after so many days?
Yeah, I think that would be a...
What do you wanna do? You want thirty days after the building is out, is, this is, actually be the one, the business ceases. Business, like, the cease's operation, the sign face shall be changed to a blank after how many days?
Sixty to ninety?
There's a little bit.
I think third is too short.
Chad? Can I ask you a couple of questions about that?
Sure.
If it was a matter of public safety, would the building inspector have the right to go under the, to go on the premises under the building code?
He also has the...
Cause I believe a sign, if it's more than four feet high, probably is considered a structure which comes under the building code.
Yeah.
So he could go in under that and at least, I'm not sure whether he has the authority to order corrections to be made, but he might. But it would seem to me that, um, the, it, it should be somehow written so that the owner of the property has a, has a recourse. I mean, just to allow that individual to enter the property for the purpose of looking at it and saying, "Well, I don't like the color of that sign" or "I think you ought to white it out or paint it out", seems to me that that should be the subject of some sort of a, at least a notice to the individual before he enters the property. And after he, he does his thing, the owner of the property should have some sort of redress through a public hearing process, either through this board or the zoning board of appeals or something, so that he can answer the questions. I mean, I think that's putting too much authority in the hands of the building inspector to make arbitrary decisions if it's anything other than public safety. Just personal view.
It does say, "The Director of Inspection Services shall serve written notice upon the owner of record of the premises where the sign is located. And any advertiser, tenant, or other pressures known to him to having control or substantial interest in said sign directing the repair or removal of the sign within a time not to exceed thirty days." And after that point, they could exact their repairs of...
This, this kind of implies that they have the right of appeal under Mass General law, chapter part here. I don't, you know, have to talk to them. The owner does have an appeal process.
Which, at that point, would be Superior Court.
That's, that's...
Yeah, yeah.
Forcing, uh, poor Lynn owner to go to Superior Court to fight an appeal to the decision of the building inspector. Or maybe the zoning board, because any individual has a right to appeal the decision of the zoning enforcement officer to the Board of Appeals to either uphold his decision or overturn it. Uh, so he's got that rule. But it would seem to me that if it's anything, if it's in violation of the, of the zoning bylaw, he has a right to enforce that already. But if it's a matter of public safety, that's an entirely different issue, seems to me. So, I don't, I don't agree with the portion that just gives him the right to go in and make repairs or going forward and then assess the individual without proper redress to some, uh, authority within the town so that at least he can hear the other side of things.
Previous verb you've pointed at that section, that right, does address that. Kind of took it out of context cause it struck me as a little extreme. Now they, 1121, you proposing what again?
Look, Mike said to change the, "In the event the business occupants cease's operation, the sign face shall be changed to blank size after sixty days of said ceasing of operation, or cessation of operation."
Should we include that in any verbiage that refers to removing a sign? Not any, cause if it's not conforming, you want to remove, but if, the previous paragraph, "Any sign that's been ordered to be removed or is abandoned or discontinued shall be..." Should we say "removed" or "shall be cut"? I was just depending on whether it's conforming or not.
It should clarify whether it's conforming or non-conforming.
Cause C says that the legal sign shall be subject to removal provisions of Article 111A. Cause 111A is non-conforming signs.
He's asking.
111A. What you could do is you can remove the "or is abandoned or discontinued". That's what this is.
Just include "conforming signs"...
But doesn't clarify why he's giving an order to remove the sign. I think under A, maybe that should be clarified. Any sign that has been ordered to be removed by the Director of Inspection Services, you know, maybe clarify why it's been directed to be removed. And, and is it the entire sign or is it just, you know, the, the part possible of the face of the sign?
I think I give it a direction. Director of Inspection Services, specify what's gonna be removed. What if we just eliminate "or is abandoned or discontinued"? We want to work to it, leave the rest of it. It's pretty clear.
Well, you, you back to the removal, how much of it do we need to define removal, removal or...
I think obviously the, uh, the Director of Inspection Services has specified what it is.
Do you want to read a paragraph tomorrow?
Would be me?
Yes.
I'll just take a look at it.
We take real input here, you know? Cause you, you missed it when you went through it, obviously.
Let me take a look at it, well. I'll see what you do. Which section is that?
Eleven, eleven twenty-one.
No, we're talking really about your concern on the page two, Chad. That section, that's, that's really where there was a concern. To do this, you wanna do this thing right, so, yeah.
Yeah.
You have your own expertise, we're not gonna sit there and try and rewrite something and go back and forth several times. Just so the audience understands, Mr. Allen, the engineer of the town has already put in, put into the sign by law changes, so we're not asking for something unusual.
I don't, I don't know that I like the language where it says, "Wherein his judgment is a prohibited, non-essential sign or is likely to become dangerous or unsafe." Any structure at some time in the future can likely become dangerous or unsafe. At what point do you say, "Well, it is"? It seems to me that you ought to make a determination, "It's unsafe." If it's unsafe, that means, okay, then you're gonna do something fair. But to say, "Well, it's likely to be unsafe", that's not sufficient reason, I don't think. If you'd like, Alan, I'll be happy to take a look at it.
Go ahead, just make some change.
All right.
I have my question for the next one. What are the board's sign with it?
That ties into the eleven twenty-one, Section 1121 question, Chad.
Well, 1121 question, yeah, 1121, we're talking about just, uh, the second sentence of removing the words "or is abandoned or discontinued" and be where it is. This is where the Director of Inspection Services already ordered the sign to be removed, which you have to comply with the other sections, you won't do that.
So what do you do with "abandoned or discontinued"? Is that...
We already have, we already talked about it before, we changed it there.
The other issue is the fines. Seems a little extreme.
Actually, we're selecting, talking about going through all the fines and, you know, increasing everything up to whatever the town's at. The, the dollar amounts were within the range of, the average of about five, six pounds or something like that. It may seem high, but it's not.
On B's, uh...
Obviously, this ladder two-two, the kids will range up two, doesn't mean actually charge, does it?
Yeah, but we know what that means.
Well, actually, we've had a history of not charging the max, even.
Where?
I have a question, George. Uh, maybe I don't prefer to take Alan. For some reason, the background, I can look under the Section 1120, that will be, I've got, they've established, and then combined by the Department of Inspection Services. Is it not something in Mass General law that says something about these? It, aren't these been around as long as I have, and covered with Charlie? To remember that they used to come before Tom meeting to set all these fees. And I don't know if that provision in the law has changed that allows departments to set their own fees or whether it's a provision in Mass General law that says that it's Tom meeting that has to set the fees. I know we've done it, I know we voted a warrant, I voted to allow... I know we've done it, I know we voted a warrant article to allow one department, and I don't remember what department off the top of my head several years ago, to set their fees.
They don't do it in town meeting, anybody could riot, I think.
For some reason, and I can totally off-base and totally want, but there's something in that, in my mind, in going through the Mass General laws, that has to do with the setting of fees, and I don't know what it's specific to. I mean, like, Marion comes in, if she wants to change any of her fees, she has to begin and does have to be voted at town meeting. So I know there's something in the Mass General laws, I wish I had a good look with me to look at, I don't, but it may be something we want to take a look at. And I want to say it might have been John Costa's department that we allowed to set fees. There was, there was a particular warrant article where we allowed that department to set the fees, but I believe other departments have to come back periodically to increase their fees, and that has to be by code of company, and I could be way off base on that, but it may be something, we need to put that in, we want to check on. Mike, can you remember?
I believe currently, Inspeccial Services takes, gets the fees approved by the Board of Selectment, correct? So I don't know where that changed to place.
It wasn't, it wasn't having asked. Some reason there's six of them. No, having asked the fees are approved by the Board of Selectment, too.
Because I remember when Henry White, when Henry White was in, I remember those town meetings, he used to command every time he wanted to change his fees, so there's something.
Ambulance fees are set by the Board of Selectment.
We could simply add there after the word Directional Inspeccial Services, following rules of Mass General law, town chat, and bylaws. And that covers in cases that don't cease, that's all.
I mean, like I said, I can be off-base, it's just something made in the back of the law.
That covers it if we ever change any rules, anyway.
In some sections of Mass General law, they restrict the amount you can charge, such as the buyer prevention regulations. A lot of the permit fees are set by the state, you cannot, you can charge, you don't have to charge, but if you charge, you cannot charge more than X number of dollars, whatever's in the, in Mass General law. Some places, it's in the CMIs, the Code of Mass Suspects Regulations, will state what the, what the level of fees can be. In other, in other areas, ambulance fees, permit fees are set, I think, I believe they're set by the Board of Selectment. You know, it's, you have to check the general law first to see if that restricts you as to what levels of fees you can charge. But usually, you know, fees need to be somewhat fair and reasonable for the service, you know, I mean, you can't, you know, somewhere earlier, you mentioned your medical marijuana, you know, who just charged ridiculous fee for the, well, I think the state would kick it out in a minute, because they'd say that it's not reasonable and inappropriate. You need to be careful. You can charge fees, but, you know, you can't just make them so unreasonable that people can't afford them, and use that as a way to stop something.
I don't really know. Basically, talks about non-conforming, that they don't have to do any of us to do certain things, and I believe we've, in 118, in 1118, we've changed section A to avoid that whole issue in the content and everything, which has trade names, different birth letters, new design, whatever. So, and it does state that, you know, nothing has to be changed unless certain things happen. And therefore, protecting grandparents, the data law, they're going to protect.
Pre-existing non-conforming.
Yeah, it's pre-existing non-conforming. It stays until soon as there's time to trigger something. And if conditions happen, it triggers removal of the person.
Seeing nothing? Could I, can I motion across the public hearing?
Just a question. Alan, if I were to look over that section, and come up with something else that seems to be appropriate, how does that get incorporated into this public hearing process? If you close it now. Question. I'm not suggesting you continue it, because I know you've got a limited amount of time.
I would ask the moderator, because we're taking a quote from this public hearing, we're going to be modifying some of the pieces, because they're not final documents.
That's not a mine for you. But that's something you have to run by Town Council, and I think that would be something that the AG would look at. The only question I get to ask at town meeting is, has it been a public hearing?
Yep.
And if the answer is no, there's one course of action, or if the answer is yes, there's something in the other course of action. What would happen was, if you did change something, and it passed at town meeting, then it went to the AG's office, if somebody brought up that it had, you know, whereas this question that had changed out of the public hearing, that would be up to the AG that would decide whether they would allow, and we should pass the whole thing out.
Past practice has been, if this information's sought through the public hearing open, bring the information back in the public hearing format. The problem we would have now is timing. We need to have to continue this public hearing to either Thursday Friday or Monday, because of public meeting law.
Does it need to happen after the second day of the town meeting?
No, I don't think there's a requirement of that. We've had them the night of town meeting before. By the necessity. So depending on how much information you want.
Well, we've had, Town Council's seven note off, the information comes back, and you're going to make some changes from input. Charlie's given us input. You know, whether we write it, or he writes, or whatever, it's still not a finished document. It's already been discussed here. It's a public record right now.
My concern would be that if I write something that changes the intent of that section, and it's not within the public hearing process, we run the risk of, as Claire suggested, that it gets turned down by the home, by the hearing general. Now, I may just turn down that section, might not overturn the whole thing, but it might violate that section.
Yeah, the way, the way it's written, if they reject a couple, a portion there, it says in there, what about severability? So they wouldn't reject the law, but they can reject a small portion of it, which would be that. If that's what you say.
When, when is town meeting?
Monday.
Monday?
That was 1121? Is that what we did?
Everything is page two.
Page two, and then it ties into 1121. These three or four are the areas that were being updated as it was.
But we've, we've stated those changes in the public hearing, but, you know, this is new information that's not available.
Charlie was stating what the changes would be, and we're just saying, go ahead and write it, whether that's right.
Well, if you want to state, if you want to state those over again, on the public record, then.
Yeah, maybe that's discussed, right? Then you can get it over tonight, it'd be a part of the public record, and you just have to take it, what little input I can give to you at this point.
Basically, his inputs being put in for clarity.
Yep.
This is clear.
I would strike that portion of the first sentence that says "or is likely to become dangerous, unsafe, or in disrepute."
Which paragraph are you on right now?
Just on page two, item two. Just, just take out that section of the first sentence that says "or is likely to become dangerous, unsafe, or in disrepute."
So the sentence would read, "To order the repair or removal of any sign which in his judgment is prohibited non-accessory sign which is erected or maintained contrary to this bylaw?"
"Or which is erected or maintained contrary to this bylaw."
Four, it's not four.
Yeah.
Said four, it said "or."
Yeah.
I don't stand on an appeal.
I am bothered still by what you brought up about the, having the authority to win and make repairs and so forth, and I'm not sure how to word that.
I think he already has the authority to have a structure removed, regardless of this verbiage. You know, if it's unsafe, he already has that.
Give me a few minutes just to read. Yeah, word talks about, you have to remove the sign if such notice and order is not complied with or appealed, subject to Mass General law, chapter 48. Chapter 48 is a zoning enabling act, which allows you to appeal the decision of the building inspector to the Board of Appeals.
That puts you back to the ZBA.
Do we need to put the wording in that any fines or decisions would be suspended during the appeal period?
Yeah, same sphere. Probably just in case.
Well, that may be a natural function of 48, I don't have it in front of me.
I don't know what water to call it.
Still, uh... When the building inspector orders a building demolished now, under public safety and so forth, under what statute does he do that?
I think he has to...
You know the procedure.
I think he has to do a court order, doesn't he? Yeah, there's a rule.
I believe it comes under 780 CMI.
I know that the...
It comes under 520.
Why, chief has to look at it.
They have, they have to have a board survey.
So they has to look at it, or an uninterested citizen has to look at it, to see if they comply with, you know, this is a matter of public safety, it should be removed. But what, what does he do? Does he charge the homeowner then for the cost of the demolition? I don't know.
They do, or they put a lien on the property, either, if it's audited to be demolished, a lien gets put on the property, so the owner can't sell it until the lien.
I don't know how to recommend to you, on that, the second half of that, the building inspector, taking the property and doing repairs, then charging the owner for it. Personally, I don't like it, but I don't know how to reword it.
It just doesn't hit me the right way. I, I know the intent, it's probably in extreme circumstances.
It's a big state.
But it, it could be interpreted, we don't like your light bulbs out, we're going to change them. I know, it's a little ridiculous to interpret it that way, but... I, I can't see how that section could be used in day-to-day operations. It would have to be, to me, I would think it would be an extreme case where a sign fell over, was a, was a matter of public safety, which he could move it or remove it anyway. Like, if he had to, Heimlich's bullet panel out of a sign, and somebody complained, the Director of Inspeccial Services go in and repair it, I don't know.
It's my stomach saying I haven't had supper. Thanks, you're killing me, because I think I can live without it.
The building inspector has, has the authority to enforce the zoning bylaw, that's, that's his job, right? So this is going to become a part of the zoning bylaw.
Right.
So it would seem that he has the authority under the zoning bylaw to enforce it, and that may mean getting a court order, or if the person does not comply with his directive to conform with the bylaw, ignore it, his next step, I think, would be to take it to court, I would think, the same as he would do any zoning bylaw by law, in the absence of an appeal of the decision by the owner of the property. So why couldn't you just start it? After it talks about directing repair or removal of a sign not to exceed thirty days, and then say that such order may be appealed, subject to Mass General law, chapter 48, and just do away with the rest of it? Because he already has...
Well, you could also just make the note that all fines and orders be suspended pending the outcome of the appeal.
Yeah, I guess you could throw that in. But, you know, as far as the rest, I would almost eliminate that, because it seems to me that he has the authority to enforce the zoning bylaw of which this is a part. And it will eliminate, I realize, giving him the authority to go in and make repairs and, and remove the sign, but that can be done through other means, I think. Already, I'm not sure that you need to give him something else that, that really infringes... I'm not sure that you need to give him something else that, that really infringes, I think.
Well, if he goes to a structure that's in danger of collapsing or something, then what is its demolition?
That's, that's an entirely different thing, which he already has, I believe, the authorization to do.
But I think what we're hoping, trying to gain here, that if something is a imminent danger, he has the right to do it, which I think he already has.
Well, I, in truth, as public safety is involved, the direction of inspection services take immediate action.
So I, I don't think you, I don't think we need this verbiage in there.
Who do you want to take out? You want to stop where it says, will the time not exceed thirty days?
Thirty days after giving such notice.
Yeah, and then at the end of that sentence where it says, after giving thirty days' notice, you can say that, um, the decision of the, of the direction of inspection services may be appealed by the owner of a record of the premises, subject to national law's forty-eight. Which, which gives him the right to appeal the decision to the ZBA. And if the ZBA turns him down, then he's right back to square one with the enforcement, which I think he then would take the next step, which would be a court order if he's not complying.
Well, you, on the other, on, um, yeah, the section, you already have a fine statute, a fine built in. So you can already be fined two hundred and fifty dollars a day for failure to conform, so.
If, if that is a concern, then that would be my recommendation. Stop it right after, um, that sentence that stops for thirty days after giving such notice. Just add after that that the owner record may appeal the, um, decision of the direction of inspection services by, by appeal, subject to national law, chapter forty-eight. And then everything else just go away.
Does forty-eight automatically suspend fines and penalties for the period it takes to do the appeal?
I don't know, George.
Or do we need to make note of that?
It probably does if it's under appeal, but I can't.
I, I know it's, I don't know if it's written specifically, I know it does.
I, I can't tell you that. I would assume that logically it would. I mean, if the decision is under review, then whatever daily fee might accrue, perhaps it'd be suspended until such time as the decision is made by the ZBA. If they, um, if they uphold the decision, then from that point on, you decide how many time until the, uh, appeal process is over. Because I think there is, um, a twenty-day appeal period under the decision of the ZBA.
Yeah, but, you know, I don't, I don't know that fines shouldn't start the day, the day the order. Uh, they, the fine may be suspended until the appeal. But should they lose the appeal, the fine goes back to the date of the original order, not the date. Because then everyone would appeal it because they have nothing to lose. They can get thirty, sixty, ninety days free, basically. So I mean, the, the fine should start the day the order, but, but not the, the, the person, doesn't have to pay that cumulative fine until either, if he, if he wins his appeal, he doesn't have to pay the fine. If he loses the appeal, then he would need to pay back to the, because otherwise you, you're creating an incentive for them to, everyone to appeal it every time and, uh.
Well, you're also, it may be a financial benefit to deny the appeal. You're creating, you shift the other side one way or the other, right?
Well, it certainly would take a time for the person to put together an appeal to the ZBA.
It could take two weeks or more just to get on their agenda.
Well, it obviously would because you, you've got the, it only submitted.
You just said that it was.
So this has been advertised too. So you, you're probably a month out from the date that you actually filed the appeal request to a public hearing. So, does the daily fine accumulate up to that point? I don't know.
Well, forty-eight addresses it, then okay, but if not, we should put some verbiage in there to back it up.
I don't know what's in forty-eight.
And what was the?
I have to look at the microphone.
What was the other question? Was that eleven twenty-one? Are we done with that?
Eleven twenty-one, we're down to, we're moved up. Section C, C two, we're taking a whole section right out of it. We're eliminating a part of the sentence.
Okay, anything further to be said on this signed bylaw?
So we'll need you to rewrite one.
Can I ask a question about clarification?
Sure.
It talks about, um, signs on windows.
Twenty-five percent of the glass area?
Yes, well, it doesn't say glass area. That's my question.
Oh, okay.
I don't think it says glass, I think it says area or, or. Window signs.
Window sign.
A total window area. You know, I, not that, I mean, this is kind of picky, but window area, does that include all the framework and all of that? Or, or are you talking about glass only? It's, um, page ten, item nine. I would think that window signs would pertain to glass as opposed to window area. I'm just thinking about storefronts that might have very large frameworks and I'm not sure if it should be better defined as glass or.
Window glass area, you had to go with glass, not the window?
I'm not, I, it's just a question. I was reading it, I'm thinking, how, how does someone interpret that? And also, how does the inspector, um, calculate it?
So instead of window area, you should say glass area?
I don't, I'm not saying it should be either way, I'm just saying it should just be well-defined so that the inspector understands.
So he knows exactly what to measure.
What he's measuring.
So just add window glass area.
Possibly.
That was one of the, one of the things that I was kind of looking for. And I can put, as far as signs in general, there should be a percentage of the wall area rather than than forty square feet, eighty square feet max. A live building can handle a larger sign than a small building.
In reference to those signs, that do change the writing, the letters.
Yeah, I started to look that up.
I mean, I don't know what's right or wrong, but if this bylaw is truly for public safety, having those signs where the words change continually other than, you know, I know date, time, and temperature are pretty consistent. I mean, the temperature may change a degree or two, but the, the idea is to change them. It's just a rolling change, so.
I, I was looking, I was looking for those. Are they just listed in a paragraph or prohibited?
There's not a lot of detail, but.
They're in prohibited, the billboard and the, and the, they're in the prohibited section, but they have to run under one, one, two, five to go for special permit. If the ZBA were allowed under special permit.
I mean, even if they're allowed, should the, should the writing be required to stay for a certain period of time, whether it's a twenty-four hour period or?
It's a special permit, the ZBA would set it.
You can't say, oh, one, one, three, nine.
One, one, three, nine, section A, you have to add that with glass, all, total window glass.
This is just an observation.
Why not?
Page, page thirteen.
Yep.
It's got a, a repeat of a couple of paragraphs. I think, uh, paragraph C and paragraph F are exactly the same.
Let's go with F.
Say it three times so you don't forget.
Yeah, let's get the F out of here. That was a bad joke.
And also, you could eliminate E by saying, in, in B, applicant seeking a variance slash special permit. Because, um, that's what the Board of Appeals typically advertises. When they put a notice in the paper, they say so-and-so seeks a variance slash special permit. Because a lot of times, they will make a determination that if somebody complies with what they think is a special permit, but a variance is sought. And the variance is not labeled in the notice, you have to stop everything and re-advertise. So I think because V and E are so similar, except for the words variance and special permit, you could simply say, in B, applicant seeking a variance slash special permit from these regulations. Because all the information you're looking for in V and E appear to be the same.
This particular section was written by town council.
Well, that's what they're going to do, yeah. It was, the town council put it in that way and it doesn't.
It's paid by the.
When you air it out, it doesn't break, you know?
Because the level two, two, five is to allow for a special permit.
In variance, it's in and of itself is considered a special permit.
I gotta, I gotta qualify that because F and C are the same, except C says variance, F says special permit. So if you take C and add written receipt of written variance slash special permit request, then you get rid of that. My apologies.
When they do their variance slash special permit, is it and/or, or is a variance considered a special permit?
Slash special permit. That way, the advertising is done for both. And the Board of Appeals makes its decision at the time the public hearing is open as to exactly what they're hearing. If they feel that it only requires a special permit, then their considerations are different than what they would be with variance. But if both of those things are not included in the notice that goes in the paper, they can only hear what they've advertised. So it causes a problem in time and time. That's the way they do it, but you could, you could make this the same, uh, be consistent with theirs by just putting the words, uh, variance slash special permit in both B and C, then you could get rid of being a.
As long as they don't interpret that as, as needing both.
No, they never do.
Yeah.
But there may be some things that they do require a special permit.
Yeah, there are some that.
And other things within the same application that might require variance. That, that's happened before.
So it's got a variance slash special permit, or variance or special permit. Because this is why we keep both with variance.
If you put or, then it's, then it kind of identifies it that way. Seeking a variance or special permit.
Yeah, because the idea is they could go for a special permit rather than variance.
That may be more, that may be better, well, in some instances that.
So would you put and/or?
You'd be safe to put and/or.
That's what I'm saying, if you go for both, if you have to go for both, it has to say and/or. If you go for one or the other, then it's or.
Two words are cheaper than a whole paragraph.
Okay.
So that takes just F out of the picture or F in?
Look, F out of the picture.
That's all. F and E. All right, eliminates E and F.
Yeah, it removes the last two, those are written separately for.
All right, are we good on that?
Well, that's weird. We'll go back tomorrow.
And entertain a motion. Close the closed public hearing on signed by law. Motion's been made by Charlie, seconded by Mike. Is there any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor? I, closed. All right, and I would look for the, the motion to recommend whatever your pleasure is on the signed bylaw as amended.
Everybody speak. Sorry, you're killing me.
Was that a motion, Charlie?
Yeah, I guess so.
So maybe I don't even hear myself talking.
Yeah. Seconded by Mike. Any discussion?
Hearing done.
Sorry. The motion was to recommend favorable action on the signed bylaw as amended. And it was seconded. Need to reference either? All those in favor? Closed.
It should have stayed.
The judge has a favor. He's handed out, and people are taking these home. If you're going to return these to the changing room, please make a note on the front page that these, that it's new handout, so that people don't bring what they had tonight and think that's what they're, because the motion on the floor is going to be as printed in the handout. And just don't want any confusion on the floor that if someone brought their handout from tonight, that that's what they're voting on. Uh, somehow you have to make it very clear.
Shall we write the town meeting version?
Whatever you have to do, because the motion will be as printed in the handout. So you don't want to have fifteen people bring their version that they got tonight and think that's the version that they're voting on.
It causes confusion.
Very good.
Just, uh, have it got.
Newspapers.
I'm sorry?
Ask the newspapers to put that in there, seriously.
Uh, the zoning bylaw use table. It would be my recommendation to table that pending further study of, by us to see if what's actually been changed in there, because Charlie did a lot of work updating actions that had already been voted on at town meeting, but hadn't been incorporated into our zoning bylaw fully, uh, in the flashlight. And then John went and made some other corrections that we don't have any way to track at this time. So we have to kind of compare one to another. And I don't feel comfortable moving forward with it, so.
Motion to table the zoning bylaw use table?
Yeah, I would say withdraw. Well, I guess first we have to close the public hearing.
Do you want us to close the public hearing?
I would.
I'll second it.
Very good. Any discussion? All in favor?
By way of explanation for the rest of the board. I was asked last year sometime to look at the zoning bylaw for those amendments which had not been put in the back of the book. If you look in the back of the zoning bylaw up to nineteen ninety-six, it had all the various amendments listed in the back. But there were many amendments after nineteen ninety-six that got passed by town meeting, went through the Attorney General, and were approved. And you couldn't tell whether or not they've been incorporated into the actual bylaws or not. So I made that list for John when he was here. He went through and, to the best of my knowledge, made those updates. But I can't tell you any more than that because he and I never got together after I had given him that summary of what I found. I know there were some things that needed to be changed because there were parts of the bylaw that were not approved by the Attorney General, that was a pass by town meeting. You had to be careful about what you inserted. There were just two or three of those, but it was important. And then there were things in the use tables that had been approved, the table hadn't been updated to incorporate what had been approved. And I think that's what he did, but I can't substantiate it. So you'd have to compare what you have in front of you to what was there in a book previous to him making the changes to see what...
Well, the problem I have is if that's all that was, took place, there would be no need for town meeting action. Town meeting had already voted these changes, they just hadn't been put in the document.
Correct, but I...
So I'm a little puzzled by the town meeting adequately prepared because I, I'm not fully aware of all the other changes.
I don't know either, George, because we did a discussion...
And they're not identified, so we couldn't say to town meeting, this is what's been changed, because we don't know. We have to take some time, go through the whole document, see what was there before.
I can't substantiate any of that because I didn't talk with you.
Exactly, so I, I think it's better off. I don't think that there's anything in there that's going to affect anybody late until spring. I know there was one little obscure piece of land that was, should have been incorporated in the B dot overlay when it was, when it was created and it was left out for some reason in the boundaries, so, you know, stuff like that that need to be tracked out. So anyway, that was my recommendation. And there was a motion on the floor to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you, and now a motion on the adequate so. Did you make that one out?
I must have. I've been volunteering for the rest of them. Motion to withdraw the zoning bylaw use table until spring.
Seconded by Mike, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? It's been so old. And I think that's all we have on the agenda this week. Oh, yeah. Quite amidst my paper mark here. We'll approve those.